Okay, thank you. Ms. Lee, welcome. We see you. All righty. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We are calling to order the regular meeting of the Jackson City Council, July 30th, 2024. It is 10:04 a.m. here at City Hall. We have with us today Pastor Sprata Thomas with Central United Methodist Church. He's a ward seven pastor in the Fair Street District, and we're very happy to have him come now and give us the invocation. Following that, Councilman Hartley will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty and triune God, we give thanks and praise for all of your mighty works. You are loving and good and gracious. We thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you for making us in your image to exist in community with other people. We thank you for our city of Jackson. We thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and the individuals that make up our great city and the place where we live. But Lord, we acknowledge that we do not deserve these good gifts. We are not worthy of your favor. We have sinned against you in thought, word, and deed. We sometimes do things that we should not do, and we sometimes don't do the things that we should do. We have not loved you with our whole heart, and we have not loved our neighbors as ourselves. We appeal to you, God. Please forgive us and give us hearts of obedience to your divine will. Lord, thank you for the members of this city council. Those who bear the sword do so as your ministers, to be ambassadors against crime and hate. I pray that our civil servants will acknowledge this calling and perform it faithfully. Grant that they will not neglect or abuse their authority, but they will stand firm for truth and justice. In all of this, keep them safe from all harm as they serve our community. I pray for this city council meeting today. Give these council members, who are your servants to your people, wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. It is in these things that we ask this morning, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, as everyone said. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley, and thank you Pastor Thomas. It was an honor for you to be with us here today and lead us in such a wonderful invocation. Colleagues, do we have any introductions or announcements? Just very quickly, besides those of us who are on the dais, we also have Councilwoman Angelique Lee joining us virtually today. Colleagues, any announcements or introductions this morning? Mr. Banks?
I want to take the time, Madam President, if I can, ask Vic Allen if he would come in. Vic has been working hard with this city and with the council, and it pains me, as I know it pains us, that he will be leaving us on to better things than working with the state of Mississippi. And so I just wanted to recognize and give, and if we would, just give him a round of applause for his work and service. Come back and sing for us pro bono. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. -- thank you for doing that, Mr. Banks. And Mr. Vic, we are -- Mr. Allen, we are going to miss you, but we wish you all the best. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I just wanted to ask the individuals, especially around the West Jackson area, we're going to have schools opening, elementary, high schools, and Jackson State University. I'd like to ask folks, if you have a community group, church group, any other type of group, if you want to step forward and help me in a cleanup effort, you can contact my office or just grab me when you see me. But we will be cleaning up in preparation for our kids coming back to school and trying to encourage those students that are coming out to Jackson State for the first time to give them a presentable neighborhood that they can see, clean up sidewalks of the road, weed eating, picking up trash, things of that nature. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Any other announcements? Okay, well, colleagues, we actually have some items that I want to take before we do public comment today because we have some folks in the audience who have really busy schedules. And so with that, I want to go ahead and take the items for the airport. Those are items 33 and 34. And so, Clark, if you would please go ahead and get item 33 on the floor.
Resolution to authorize the Jackson Municipal Airport Authority to accept the Airport Improvement Program Grant Offer Number 3-28-0037-071-2024 from the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, and seek a resolution from the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, as co-sponsors for purposes directly related to the Jackson-Megger-Wiley-Evers International Airport under the auspices of Airport Improvement.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. I know that there are several people here from the airport. Would you like to just come and explain to us a little bit about what this is? Ms. Rosa?
Good morning, Council President and members of the council. I'm Rosa Beckett, the CEO of the airport. First of all, I just want to thank you all for the support with accepting these grants. I'm going to ask my Director of Capital Program, Mr. Sam Washington, to come up and just give you a brief highlight of what this funding would cover.
Thank you.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
The Jackson Municipal Airport Authority Order JMAA was awarded BIL ATP Grant Number 3-28-0037-069-2024 for $8 million, as well as AIP Grant Number 3-28-0037-071-2024 for $810,000 to fund critical replacements and updates to multiple systems within the Jackson-Megger-Wiley-Evers International Airport, or JAN. The JMAA solicited bids for HVAC system replacements and repairs, elevator and escalator replacements, passenger boarding bridge replacement, and baggage belt system replacements. The HVAC project was bid for a full replacement of chillers, pumps, air handlers, and controllers. Due to the actual cost received in the bids, the JMAA will begin the phased replacement of the chillers in the HVAC system. The elevators and escalators project will replace the four existing escalators, two ascending and two descending, with new units that will be more reliable and maintainable. The project will also replace five existing elevators, which have reached the end of their useful life, with new modern units. The bid for that project was within the allotted grant amount for the project. The JMAA will also seek additional grant funding under a recently announced Notice of Funding Opportunity, or NOFO, to allow for the completion of the remaining phases of the HVAC project and for additional terminal improvements.
Colleagues, thank you so much for that overview. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Mr. Hartley?
Just one. First of all, Ms. Beckett, we're certainly appreciative of all the hard work you've been doing at the airport, and it doesn't go unnoticed. Secondly, thank you for dealing with the escalators. They've been an issue for a long time, and when people have, you know, a bunch of bags and stuff, that really helps not having to go up the stairs. So thank you and congratulations on the award.
Thank you, and we appreciate the support of the council and the city.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Martin, you're standing behind her.
I had one thing from their in-house counsel at JMAA. I think we're on 33 right now, but on 30 -- when we get to 34, let me know. There's one minor change needs to be made.
Okay, thank you. All right, colleagues, any other questions or comments on item 33? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Clark, we got -- we have Mr. Stokes abstaining. Everyone else voted in favor. All right. Okay, then item 34, please.
Resolution to authorize the Jackson Municipal Airport Authority to accept the Airport Improvement Program Grant Offer Number 3-28-0037-069-2024 from the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, and seek a resolution from the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, as co-sponsor for purposes directly related to the Jackson-Megger-Wiley-Evers International Airport under the auspices of airport reconstruction.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Mr. Martin?
There needs to be one amendment to item 34, and it's only in the heading. The body of this resolution is correct, but in the second line of the heading, there's a reference to an Airport Improvement Program Grant. Airport Improvement Program should be stricken. This is a grant, and as you see in paragraph one, it is actually a, what's the other one? BIL ATP grant, and that's all correctly defined in the resolution itself. There was just a Scrivener's error, leaving that Airport Improvement Program phrase in the heading.
Okay, so the second line should read authority to accept the program grant.
Correct.
All right.
So move according to the statement of the city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the amendment. All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, Ms. Lee. All right, so, and I think y'all gave another view with this one at the same time as you did the first one, so there's no -- so, colleagues, any other questions or comments? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much. I want to recognize Ricky, one of the board members here with us today. My concern is Hawkinsfield. Lavonet Road has become a dumping field. It's part of Hawkinsfield. Over the years, the airport was responsible for making sure that Lavonet Road near the airport was clean. Someone has dropped the ball. It's awful.
We are continuing to support that cleanup. I have Mr. Pat Minor here, who is my chief operating officer, who's over Hawkinsfield and Jackson-Megger. And when we receive calls, he actually dispatches our maintenance folks to assist with that cleanup. Even though it's outside of the property line, we are operating as good neighbors, and we are actively engaged in that cleanup. Pat, do you want to add any additional comment?
Thank you. The guys over there at Hawkinsfield, they constantly cleaning up over on Lavonet. There is an issue with people dropping chairs, couches, furniture, and other things over there. I mean, they're doing the best they can, but when we get a report, I actually engage with Mr. Branson at that first house up there, and when we get a report of some things, we do dispatch the guys over there.
Well, my concern is that, over the years, they picked up timely. If you're allowed to build up, they're going to treat it like it's a regular dump, and they'll continue to dump. But with your police patrolling a little bit in the area, outside the gates.
Yes, and I'll make sure to put that on a weekly round to make sure it's clean over there at Lavonet every Monday morning before 12:00.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just speaking of the airport, I guess my question is, if we can get an update, how many board members do we currently have?
There are currently four board members, and we've been having discussions about filling the rest of the seats. There's a lot of discussions we need to have regarding representation, some for executive session.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. All right. Colleagues, anything else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, so, Mr. Stokes abstained. Everyone else was in favor. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Coming in late, I just want to thank the Airport Commission and our CEO for your great work and the vision that you have for the airport. I look forward to the residents becoming familiar with the direction that you're trying to take the airport. I think that they will truly be excited as we are able to unveil that ultimately. Thank you.
Thank you, both council and mayor's office. We appreciate the support.
Thank you, and thank you for being here with us today. All right, colleagues, continuing this effort to deal with some of the items that we have guessed here to speak to us about, I want to go ahead and take up item number 32. Clark, could you please get that item on the floor for us?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a program management agreement with Al Turk Planning and Development LLC to provide project oversight development -- I'm sorry, oversight various other services and general engineering services for the Department of Public Works Engineering Division.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. We did have a pretty healthy and robust conversation during work session yesterday about this item. Colleagues, are there any other questions or comments regarding this item? Mr. Al Turk is here, if anybody has any questions of him specifically.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Madam President, there's no better human being than Mr. Turk, in my estimation. My concern is not having a public works director. It's backwards thinking that we're going to hire Mr. Turk, and yet we have all these issues in the public works division. If we're going to bring Mr. Turk as the public works director, I support him 100%. I vote for him today. But there's got to be concern. When you come over with Joe Wilson trying to go toward the zoo, traffic can't go, it's blocked, people driving on the median just to get on with Joe Wilson, on Parkside near the zoo, it ain't been down over a year or more. And it just send the wrong message, lights out everywhere in the city. You know, the public works director should be the priority, and that's my vote for the public works director. We must put things back on the track. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, would you mind -- oh, you did. Thank you so much. All right, any other questions or comments about this item, colleagues? All right. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It was a vote of six to one, Ms. Jordan. All right, thank you, colleagues. Now, we're going to go back to the order of the agenda, unless there's something else somebody thinks I need to be addressing quickly. We are going to move into public comments. Colleagues, we have a total of six people. There is one person here, Mary Jackson, who is here to speak to us about item number 42. Ms. Jackson? Just as a friendly reminder, you have three minutes as a part of public comment. When you come to the podium, please state your name clearly for the record. We're very glad you are here, but we're going to ask that you -- that will prompt you when your time's drawing to an end, and we ask that you kindly respect -- all of you respect the time limit. So, Ms. Jackson, please introduce yourself. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Hey, I'd like to say good morning to the city council and everyone. My name is Mary Jackson. I'm a former employee of Jackson, and I was -- I'm here because I had a bad accident by Battlefield Park. I hit a pothole that they was working on and towed my car out, and I did -- they said it wasn't the city fault, but I did talk to someone in the water play. They said they couldn't talk to me because the city trying to put everything on them. People tying up the vehicles and putting it on them because they just stuck over the water play. So I'm here today to -- I want y'all to see the pictures and see what could I, you know, what could the city come up with. I would like y'all to see the pictures. They thank God for my life, me and my husband's life.
Madam President?
Mr. Stokes?
Ms. Jackson is a little nervous. Everybody not used to just coming and speaking at City Hall. But what had happened, husband and her were driving on the city street, hit a pothole, and I think they even hit a telephone pole.
We did.
And could almost, could have killed themselves. Issue turned to Jackson Water, maybe it did the cut of the city of Jackson. And the issue that I'm dealing with, when I say we need a public works director, is that these are still the city of Jackson streets. I don't care if Jackson Water use them to do some work on them, they still our city of Jackson Street, and it's our responsibility to make sure that the streets are safe. Now, if we don't have anyone watching Jackson Water as they do their work and make sure that they do their works the proper way and make the repairs, then that's our fault. But it's these streets, I don't care how you add it up, look at it, they are city of Jackson streets, and the responsibility must be with the city of Jackson, and it should be our responsibility to make these citizens whole. They are citizens of this city, driving on city streets and was almost killed. Now they have no transportation, and that's absolutely wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you -- Mr. Banks?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, you know, chime in on this because for a while, even before Attorney Martin, I have taken issue when it comes to claims and when it comes to citizens being made whole, especially when it's something that is our responsible, our responsibility to maintain, specifically our streets and potholes. The amount of people who are not in a place that's well off to just buy a tire, replace a front, and redo an alignment, we should not -- our claims department, Mr. Poulard and them over there, should not be in the business of trying to find a way not to pay the claim, but to make sure that we make people whole, especially also when it comes to sewer, people that have suffered sewer damage and water damages in the past. One of the things that have appalled me, and we have dealt with this, is that council members have to go the place of putting these items on the agenda to try to help make sure people are made whole, because when they go and file a claim, their claims are always denied, and, you know, they're always denied, and it's stuff that is clearly because either a lack of maintenance or something did not take place, which is our responsibility. By making people whole does not say, hey, we're not doing a good job in leadership. It just means that there's a pothole, somebody messed their tire, they ain't got the money to fix it, let's help them out. So I hope that we can get with our claims department and that we can find ways, especially if we're not doing regular maintaining of our streets, because we're not, and let's help make sure that people are made whole when we come to this issue.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Good morning, Ms. Mary. How you doing? How long have you known me? A long time. You know I love you, and you know I'm going to keep it honest with you, right? We'll have a conversation and see what role we can play. I want to be clear with the residents that this is, while I agree with you, Councilman Banks, in terms of how it relates to, you know, the denial of some claims and the situation, this one is one that we have to have a conversation with. And I will, because Jackson Water, you know, this is not just a pothole for those that are trying to understand the facts. This was a repair that Jackson Water made, right? They left the gravel in the street, right, which they do. They say that their process is to leave the gravel in the street to let it settle before they come back and then pave it, right? But sometimes the workmanship, when people do the gravel, isn't sufficient, right? And it can lead to situations like what you're talking about. I'll talk to you about what we can do, but what I will be willing to do, for sure, is to write a letter on your behalf to Jackson Water and state my position of belief that this is a claim that they should honor, right? So I'll write that letter on your behalf. Whether they choose to do it or not, I can't tell you that they will, right? But these are the type of discussions that we need to be having in terms of their responsibility to the residents of Jackson, right? Everybody knows that they're over it by court order and agreement, and so they're held responsible by the court, not as much by us, but I do think that that communication is something that I should offer to you, and we'll do everything that we can to support you on this, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Banks?
Yeah, and I appreciate it, those comments, and you're absolutely right. One, I think that at the end of the day, regardless of Jackson Water not doing the job that they're supposed to be doing, that we have a responsibility to make sure, while we fight that fight, that our citizens are made whole, all right? You know, I would hate to be waiting on something to be resolved. The second thing I would say is, when it comes to Jackson Water, they are doing a piss-poor job when it comes to fixing these cuts that they make. The cut on Maddox Road has been there for two months now. You know, so two, something sitting up too much, talking about we waiting on it, or waiting on the proper, that is unacceptable. And so I would rather go ahead and take care of them, and whatever fight we got to take to Jackson Water legal, let's arm up and let's go, because it is unacceptable, because what they're doing, and I'm saying it, is you act like you don't give a damn.
Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you.
We're going to wrap this. We're going to wrap this.
Madam President, the issue is, one, that these are still city streets. That's the only issue. They were not riding on Jackson Water's streets. The federal government did not give Jackson Water our streets. Now, we supposed to have someone watching them do work and making sure they don't do sloppy work. If we don't have someone hired to do that, we need to hire someone, because it's city wise where we got these cuts and our citizens are tying up their automobiles. You know and I know, Jackson Water does not have an open headquarters, open office where people can go talk to us. So we got to make sure that if these are city streets, that we pay these citizens to make them whole. These are lit people. They don't have a transportation, not even get to work to get anywhere. And they come to this city because they know that the city, we have a legal department. We have the resources to fight for them. And I can't forget, and I agree, when the young lady got killed on Oak and Road, at that point, we said, it's a city street. That's what we said. So what's the difference between Oak and Road and Terry Road? They all city streets. Let's pay these people, and I hope when it come on the agenda, we'll have a vote to pay them. Then we let the man, city, fight Jackson Water, they can do that, but don't put these people in the middle of that fight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And Ms. Jackson, thank you so much for coming before us today. Just as a quick note, we did just hire Mr. --
Mr. Al Turk.
-- Mott.
Yeah.
To, and I think on this extensive list, the six pages in this contract, working with Jackson Water, isn't that included?
Yes, that's included. If there's been any gap in between communication from an engineer after the exit of Robert Lee, Mr. Louis Wright has remained in communication with them, and that's only been a brief period. So I don't want people to think that there's been some huge lag in communication with Jackson Water from an engineering perspective. We're stepping in and filling that gap recently created by Robert Lee. We're stepping in and filling that gap recently created by Robert Lee. Ms. Mary, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you. Uh, you know, we go way back, so I'm gonna have a conversation and, and see what we can do. I can't, I'm, I'm not gonna uh, profess what we can do right here without information. I'm gonna make certain that I get that information so that we can see what's the best route for you, okay?
Yes.
All right.
All right, thank you, colleagues. We're gonna move now to non-agenda items. And so um, we have Calvin Smiley, who's here to talk about uh, speed bump. Please remember to state your name for the record.
Uh, Calvin Smiley, resident of Jackson. I live at nineteen forty-seven Castle Hill Drive. And recently, like last month or the month before, they repaved the street. But uh, after that, I've noticed that they put markers at different points down the street to put in speed bumps. My problem is that um, Castle Hill Drive is very, very, very busy. And this is gonna create a problem for me and my household and the next door neighbors and everybody. If all of that traffic that comes down that street starts to stop or slow down right in front of my house, it's gonna be intolerable to live in that house. Right now, they speed down the street, you got loud cars that seem like they don't have mufflers on them, trucks, buses, motorcycles, speeders and Mustangs and Dodge Chargers, all that. But uh, if they start to stop and take off right in front of my house, we not gonna be able to live there anymore. Be too much noise. Some of those cars come through there and with the loud music, they have my windows vibrating already. And if they start to stop right in front of my house, we gonna have to pack up and move.
Thank you for your comments. Um, Mr. Mayor, did you have, have any comments? Um, constituent services is here, Mr. Chris, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, which, which end of Castle Hill Drive you live on?
Right by Wilkins.
Right by Wilkins?
About a half a block from Wilkins, maybe.
On the right side?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're coming down, Wilkins going south, it's on the right side.
I got you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Uh, thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, uh, you know, when, when this, the speed bumps are approved, they have to get the permission of the folks along that street. So uh, what I'm looking at is, have anyone reached out to you or any of your neighbors to say, hey, this is what uh, we're proposing to do? Is it okay?
No, no one that's from anywhere has contacted me. I've talked to my neighbors and they, they didn't realize, they kinda retired and they weren't paying attention to what's, you know, being planned. And I went and talked to them, they said, they didn't know anything about it. But no, no one has talked to us about it.
I, I believe perhaps when you talk with constituent services, maybe you need to ask them that and maybe check with zoning or, or traffic or whoever's handling that. But uh, definitely before speed bumps are approved, folks need to reach out to everyone along that roadway and ask them for permission.
Well, no one contacted anybody, I don't think.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chris Gray is over here, he's constituent services and um, he can meet you outside and, and get all your information.
Chris, raise your hand.
Chris, I don't see.
Chris, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He, could you meet him outside? Okay, thank you. All right, um, next we have Odell Love, and this is about Lucky Shots Tavern. Mr. Love? Okay. Uh, Kiana Shelders, this is poor management landlord, high rent. Shelders? Okay, Elizabeth Stallworth, um, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna mess up this last name, but Abdul, uh, Tawab, uh, thank you. Uh, the Jackson Youth Council. This sounds like a happy thing. We could use something happy about now. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Maury Abdul Tawab. I live in Ward One, I'm sixteen years old, and I'm a rising junior for Jackson Academy. I'm a youth intern for Mississippi for a Just World and we are here today to submit a proposal for a Jackson Youth Council. It is our hope that the youth in Jackson play a part in important political decisions. Oftentimes, choices are made that affect teenagers and children all throughout Jackson without the input of those teenagers or children. The Youth Council will enable the young people of Jackson with the ability to play a role in the decision-making that will deeply affect their lives and well-being. I'm gonna pass it off to my team member, Elizabeth Stallworth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Elizabeth Stallworth and I attend Jackson Tugalu Early College. I'm fifteen and I live in Ward Two. Now, the Youth Council is a proposed platform dedicated to young people, by young people, for young people. The Youth Council will advocate for youth-oriented spaces that will allow young people to express themselves in a very productive and effective way. It will also advocate for clean water and investment in public schools and more. Now, Youth Council will not need any funding and it will also be made of fourteen members. Two from each ward, preferably one male and one female. In addition, the Youth Council representatives will be able to present and make laws to the city council and also impact the decisions that are being made by the city council. I conclude with saying that the Youth Council will provide a space for young people to come together and participate in democracy. Now unfortunately, we do not have a tangible copy of the proposal, but we will be sending an email of the proposal to each and every one of you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Go on, Ward Two. This is leadership and training. Thank you so much. Amazing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I, I wanna commend these young people not only on their presentation today, uh, but I had an opportunity to meet with them, uh, and other young fellows that are with them. Uh, not only was it a fruitful and riveting conversation, uh, I wanna make it clear that they're not, you know, we often refer to young people as the future. You're very much the present, right? Uh, you're, you're, you need to be a part of the decision-making going forward, right now. Uh, so I told them that I endorse this idea, I support this idea. Uh, and they told me that they were gonna come here and, and speak to you. So I'm sure that y'all have support for it as well. I know you said that it doesn't need money, uh, and we can get started without it. Uh, but we do need to make certain that we expose you to the opportunities and things that are happening in this state and in this world. Uh, one of the things, and we're coming back to budget season here, uh, one of the things that I regret is that uh, it was defunded, uh, the, the mayor's youth council, uh, a couple of budget seasons ago. Uh, and not, it was a modest amount of money. Uh, the sign and, and the, the message we're sending to our young people when we do stuff like that, uh, is that we don't value their ideas, we don't value their input, we don't value uh, the direction that we want uh, the city to go in. Uh, and so I hope that we not only support this idea, but we put our money where our mouth is.
Mr. Mayor, um, we appreciate your being here today and uh, I'm glad you have all of our contact information. Be sure and reach out to us. Thank you, thank you very much. All right. What a, what a wonderful breath of fresh air. Thank you so much. All right, now we have Felicia McClinton, and this is uh, concerning cemeteries and city property. Welcome, Ms. McClinton.
Good morning.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Felicia Heming-McClinton and I'm president of Gaudi Washington Edition Neighborhood Association. So when I come here, I'm really at my worst ends. Uh, I'm con- coming concerning the cemeteries. There are three cemeteries in West Jackson. Two are in Washington Edition. And I've spoken to Mr. Wright, who's my friend, and I've spoken to other people pertaining to it. It is now time for school to get in and I know the water holes in the cemetery at Jim Hill in Isburg. But even though the water holes in the cemetery, there's still the fence line that can be cut that has nothing to do with the grass holding. The cemetery on Capitol Street, we wanna improve the gateway so everybody can get to the zoo and Jackson can look great. But the cemetery faces Capitol Street and it's lined with shrubbery. The shrubbery is so high, you can't even see over to see the cemetery. But when you peek over to see it, you see the grass is as tall as the bushes. So it's no reason for it not to be done. I have someone out there, I can't even go in there. So I know that we talked about it, and I'm gonna come every time. Uh, I know we got a contract supposedly, but nothing has been done and that contract's supposed to be for three months. So in July, I can't see anything that has been done. Just let me finish, Mr. Mayor, 'cause I, I got a lot. Okay, and the cemetery on Lincoln Street, which is in Washington Edition, the center of it, we have tried to put, surrounded with shrubbery, it died. We have tried several things. I have a vision for a gate to be put there, but my vision can't come complete because we can't never keep it up. And when the limbs fall, you cut around the limbs. Now, they used to come and do a cemetery once a week on Wednesdays. I don't think they do that anymore. I've done my homework. And it's not our fault and we should be able to keep the cemeteries up. My second thing is the right of way of the property that belongs to the city at the corner of Valley and Harris Street. You have to get in the middle of Valley Street in order to see. The property that it lines with belonged to Jerry Crawford. He cuts his part. The city, your part, is growing in the street. Someone, I don't know if it was the city or not, came and sprayed to kill the weed, but you didn't come back to do anything else. It's just as bad. And that is also at the intersection of Barrett and Cleveland. Please address these issues. My constituents want us to go to three on your side. I do not wanna embarrass the city anymore than it's been, being embarrassed. So please, can you all please address that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I, I was just uh, acknowledging the Councilman, Councilwoman Lindsay that I wanted to speak after you. Uh, so, yes, there was a contract, like you said, uh, that was voted on by the council. That contract has not gone through legal after it is voted on and I have not had the opportunity to sign it. As soon as I, I talked to Ms. Lakeisha Weathers, who is the director uh, over these issues, uh, and she was saying that she was waiting on that contract before she could put those people to work. So I assure you, they're ready to go. Uh, they will be getting out there to cut. As soon as I can get that document to sign, if it can come to me today, I'm ready to sign it and we'll make sure that they're out there to cut that grass, okay?
Thank you. Uh, yes, Mr. Hartley?
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. McClinton for, for coming out and speaking up. Uh, she is in fact the leader of the Washington Edition and has an awesome responsibility over there. In addition to the things she mentioned, the size of the streets in her ward hadn't been cleaned up. Trash on the side of the road. Overgrown trees coming out into the road. Giant potholes in the Washington Edition area. And this is historic, this is a historic place. The Gaudi community, the Washington Edition community is historic. And my question is, when did we forget our history? When did we forget the significance of taking care of these places? And now we have to come up and ask that right in front of our schools, that something gets done before school starts back up. We have to ask and beg, why aren't you cleaning up the side of the road or doing the maintenance, which is one of the basic responsibilities of city government? Thank you, Ms. McClinton. Thank you for stepping up. Let me know uh, when you want me to bring my equipment over and we'll do what we can do.
Thank you. Um, all right, that is the end of, wait, wait, one quick question. Mr. Mayor, I mean, how quickly do you think you can sign that contract?
I mean, I, it's not on my desk. I just want y'all to know, according to Dr. Omari, it's already been signed. I didn't know.
Okay.
Uh, and Lakeisha Weathers just texted me that she will issue the notice to proceed today. But they've been waiting on the contract and that's, they, they were waiting on that to proceed.
That's wonderful news. Thank you so much. We're all still getting a lot of phone calls, so thank you for that. All right, colleagues, that concludes our uh, public comments. We're gonna move now to the consent agenda.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Second, we have a motion and a second on consent agenda. Um, colleagues, does, does anything need to be pulled out and considered separately? All right, if not, hearing none, all in favor? All right?
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous, um, Ms. Jordan. All right, we are now, we have now introductions of ordinances today. We're moving on to claims.
Order approving claims appearing at pages two hundred two inclusive they're on are municipal docket of claims in the amount of four million ninety-six thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents for in making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second on claims. Um, Mr. Malinbecca, you're already in, already up, thank you. Would you please go over larger claims for us?
Good morning, Goodellis Malinbecca, CFO. Uh, I present the four largest claims on this docket. They are as follows. The first is hemp hill construction in the amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents, paid out of Fund One Seventy-three, one percent infrastructure tax. This is for Mill Street Bridge replacement. And the second is Metro Jackson Convention in the amount of two hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents, paid out of Fund Two Zero Three. I'm sorry, actually.
I was gonna, this isn't matching my, um...
Yeah, sorry, they gave me the wrong one.
I was assuming mine was wrong, but um, good, thank you.
Let me get the correct one. All right, so I have the correct one here. Uh, the first is Heinz County Board of Supervisors in the amount of six hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars, paid out of Fund One, General Fund. This is for the biannual payment for the juvenile justice center. The second is Jackson Redevelopment Authority in the amount of three hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and one cent, paid out of Fund One, General Fund. This is for the payment for fountain construction. The third is Entergy in the amount of three hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-two cents, paid out of Fund One, General Fund. This is for the street lighting. And the fourth is Metro Jackson Convention in the amount of three hundred one thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and forty-six cents, paid out of Fund Two Zero Three, Jackson Convention Appropriations. This is for the Visitors Bureau Transfer of Taxes, July twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, thank you very much. And uh, on the second item of that payment to fountain construction, is that for the planetarium?
It is.
Okay, thank you. All right, colleagues, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, how much we paying to Entergy?
Uh, Entergy, this is uh, for the street lighting, three hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-two cents.
My concerns still stand. Uh, and I don't know if Ms. Wrighty had a chance to meet with Entergy or not, but the city is mighty dark. Lights out everywhere. You know, it's my understanding there's a possibility that child that was killed, that was hit by a car in South Jackson, they said that she couldn't see. We must make the city bright. We must brighten up this city. We must, the lights that's out, just make sure we put them on. But when we have neighbors requesting lights because it's dark, we need to stop making excuses and we need to make sure we can get people lights in this city. Criminals love to have it where it's dark. Makes no sense then on Highway Eighty, from Clinton to Robertson, there's no lights. We need lights in this city. And I think somebody can meet with Entergy, talk to Entergy and let them know that the city need to be brighter. We need lights on in the city of Jackson to help stop crime and to make the city safe. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm glad that Councilman Stokes says someone needs to meet with Entergy. Done. I've already met with uh, Haley Fazakli, we met last week. Uh, me and the, the rest of the executive team, uh, we shared that concern. Uh, we shared what we had been hearing from residents. We shared what we had been hearing from residents. He shared a method and asked that we help in the communication of how we help residents use the app in order to take a picture of the pole, and that automatically populates in their system. What he then agreed that he would do, beyond just notifying, he said that he would give us a list of all of the street lights that they are aware of that are out, just as we have started to do with our traffic lights that have had fallen in disrepair. We've been giving a list to our residents every week, letting them know the status and when they're going to be repaired. He said that he was willing to do that from Entergy's side, give us a list of what they know, and then give us a list of improvements as they go along so that we can mark the progress along the way. And so we are looking forward to doing that. We will do all that we can to populate the list on our side, but if you are available or if you're near a light and you notice that it's out, we ask that you help become the army that gets all these lights populated in the system. But I look forward to being able to mark the progress there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hartley?
I know this is strange in just a little bit of way, but we are talking about paying energy, so I'd like to follow up on that. Can you provide a list to the city council folks so we don't have to duplicate? If they're already aware of it, if you could share that list, that would be good when you receive it. So, you know, I got issues, huge issues along Highway 80. Folks have been complaining about those. I want to see if that's on there already. I've reported it, but just want to see what they know and what they're tracking. The second thing is, that app is very good, and I appreciate that. If they could have a list of the progress that they make, that would be a good one other point, but maybe I'll come back to that.
All right, thank you.
Can I respond? I plan to not only give it to the city council, my intention is to give that list to all of the residents of Jackson. We plan on publishing that list for people's knowledge and consumption and understanding of where the status of those things are. Yes.
Just one other thing, during your discussion, did you have an opportunity to ask them, are you, you know, is Entergy going around and checking out their own lights to keep, to make sure that they're on? Because, you know, this is just one more thing for the residents to have to do, is contact them and tell them the light's out. So do they have a way of tracking? Do they have a team that can go out and check the list?
I don't know what their tracking process is. I'll pass that along to, their personal tracking process, I'll pass that along to Louis Wright.
Well, maybe he might be aware if there is a side of an animal.
Yeah, Louis Wright, CAO. There is a tracking process in terms of them going around doing what is known as a night patrol. They will go through the neighborhood and identify those lights that are out, especially on the thoroughfares, and make sure that they get those repaired. But they did mention that in terms of the night patrol.
Okay, well, the one on 80 been out for a long time. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Mr. Foot, well, Mr. Stokes and then Mr. Foot.
Mr. Foot, go first.
That would be good. Thank you, Mr. Foot, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, you know, the fee here that we're paying in the claims document is $353,754. My understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, but my understanding was that our contract with Entergy was not based on use of electricity, but it was on the lighting and that they're responsible for keeping the lighting, for fixing the lights when they're out. So if they have a list, then the question I've got is, what are they doing to get the lights fixed? If they already know what's aren't working, if they went a list of unworking lights, then they need to be working every day to fix those lights. And I don't need a list from them on the lights that aren't working. I need them to work on fixing the lights that are...
That aren't working, yeah.
Is that, am I wrong about that? That's what I thought you were saying once.
What gets measured gets done. And so the list is not in order to employ you to be responsible for it, but it is to inform you of the progress that is being made. That is why I asked for the list, because we can continue to have this conversation with no sense of where progress is, right? We continue to anecdotally say, my light is out on this street, and my light is out on this street, not knowing whether Entergy is aware of that light being out. That's why I asked for the list, so that if there's a light that you've been calling about, Councilman Hartley, and you want to know, it made sense to you a second ago for the list, you know? A second ago, it was, I need to have that list to know if what I've been reporting is on there.
What I'd like to do is cut back on the amount of work that the citizens have to do, and we're asking them to do a lot. And if they already have a mechanism to get it done, then they need to get it done first.
All right, y'all, I'm going to ask that we not speak over each other, and wait, please kindly to be recognized.
Apparently, there is a mechanism. I'm not here, I don't work for Entergy, right? I'm not here to defend or to prosecute their process. What I'm here is to measure progress. What I'm here to do is see that we're getting a resolution to the challenge, and the only way that I can measure it is to get the data that they have to see whether or not the lights that you are aware of are on that list, right? They asked if residents know of something, and they're in a position to take it, that they take a picture in order to populate it. They still have their process, but what we're trying to do is get to the solution and get the fastest path to that solution.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Stokes and then Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Madam President. Several years ago, Clinton and Entergy had a dispute about building, and a lot of our citizens still fear that we overbuild in Jackson. But in the past, it was Entergy who would come out, identify lights out, make repairs. And I think that's what Councilmember Hartley keeps speaking of, is more work for citizens. I just moved maybe three months ago from a flip phone to no phone. How do you ask poor people in poor neighborhoods to contact an app? Old ladies, grandmamas, they don't know how to do it. That's Entergy's job. That's what we paying them for. If we got to do their job, then they need to reduce how much money we paying. Reduce how much money we paying them if they want us to do their job. And it's not right that we're asking citizens to do more and more and more. Our neighborhoods, these streets are dark, lights are out. No one's coming to even try to see, to inspect, but I bet you they going to Madison to inspect it, and we deserve to be treated the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, Madam President, just since we're talking about lights and the prevention thereof, and I think this deals more so with law enforcement, because we don't have that in the city MDOT, but we'll be surprised at the amount of lights that are out that happen like Terry Road because of 18-wheelers going down streets that they're not supposed to be going down. Yeah, you didn't hear me? Okay, because of 18-wheelers going down streets that they're not supposed to be going down. And, you know, we have to begin to enforce that, because when we have those lower hanging lights, there are a lot of them in South Jackson that are being torn up by these 18-wheelers, and they just keep on going. The one that happened on Terry Road, that was an 18-wheeler that just hit it and just kept going. So we have to step up our enforcement of that as well and making sure that 18-wheelers are going down streets that not supposed to be.
All right, thank you, colleagues. We need to move along. This is claims, and we certainly, it's very important to discuss the issues regarding vendors, and I do appreciate that. But are there any other issues that you have questions or concerns about regarding claims at this time? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, claims passes with a vote of 4-3. Thank you. All right, we're moving on now to payroll, item seven.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims number 30524, to and making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, any questions or comments on payroll? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you, colleagues. Item number eight.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Vanessa Morales Berry's Spanish interpretation services to provide said services to Spanish-speaking individuals in the city of Jackson Municipal Court.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item. We did have some conversation yesterday. Are there any questions or comments regarding this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Councilwoman Lindsey, Councilwoman Lee, where are you? I don't even know who I am. All right, Councilwoman Lee, did we lose you? Okay, she's gone. All right, let the record reflect that Councilwoman Lee is no longer with us. We still have six here. All right, that, could I get that vote again? I'm sorry. All in favor of item number eight? All right, it's a vote of 6-0, thank you. Item number nine? Oh, it's been pulled, sorry. Item nine has been pulled. And then item 10?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment to ESEVA's master subscription and service agreement with the city of Jackson in order to, in support of the grants management software.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second on this item. We did have some discussion yesterday. I've got a note that there may be some amendment needed on this. Is that true or not? No? Okay. All right, colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Can abstain.
Okay, so it's a vote of five in favor, one abstention. Okay, I got it, thank you. I got a note on it. All right, thank you. All right, so item number 10.
11.
11, sorry.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute project technical assistance agreement for the city to receive technical assistance to support city initiatives to further racial equality with the city's role as an issue of municipal bonds.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
In layman's terms, what would this accomplish?
Generally, when we get rated by the rating agencies, there's a matrix they use. One of the components they evaluate is the, what they consider ESG, environmental, social, and governance. We have not had a system framing the work that we typically do with projects that address equality. And so this here is pro bono support that we're getting from the Public Finance Initiative, our financial advisors, PFM, as well as the National League of Cities. So for instance, the bond that we have for the $40 million bond, ideally, we would like to have a disclosure that does provide the work that we'll be doing within the wards, which does represent equity. And with that said, as folks evaluate our ESG, they can look that we do have specific language that addresses equality.
Thank you for the information from Jackson Public Schools also.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of 6-0, thank you. Ms. Lee, I think, is gone. Yeah, thank you. And just as a quick note, clerks, we are pulling, the administration is pulling items 31 and 34 in addition to item 21. So those are the items that are being pulled, three more. Okay, item 12.
Order authorizing the city of Jackson to pay Armstrong Transfer and Storage Company to relocate Jackson Police Department Precinct 4 from 5080 Parkway Drive, Jackson, Mississippi, 39211.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Chief, the area as a whole, near Oyo, and I know you've been fighting a good fight with moving the precinct, would that help us in terms of the, it's like a strip now. Those hotels, they going from one hotel to another hotel, walking half naked and in and everything else.
Okay. Good morning, Joseph Wade, Chief of Police, and you are absolutely correct. I've been out there myself, walking at the Oyo Hotel along with my team. And again, as we've talked about this before, I want to look at a holistic approach. The way to deal with the Oyo Hotel, first of all, is to tear it down. I know that we don't have the resources right now. I know there's something that's being worked on, but as we move these people out, they come right back because they have nowhere to go. They're homeless, some are addicted to drugs. And as we maneuvered around that facility, you know, we saw signs of drug paraphernalia, which is dangerous. So to answer your question, that move is strategic, because right now, as you know, Precinct 4 is located on the far northeast corner of the city. So now we're moving to the business quarter, the 55th Quarter, which we're going to be right down the street from the Oyo Hotel. And all those very, very important businesses that are flourishing right there on the 55th Quarter, and also it's going to have an impact on all the transients, the vagrants, the homeless individuals that are walking, causing these issues as you just stated.
Chief, we thank y'all. I see you on the interstate. We have a presence, presence now with speeders on the interstate. We can see different things taking place, and what some of these citizens educate me on, a lot of these people that you see coming into these areas are not from Jackson. They're from all over the United States and parts of Mississippi and everything else.
And you're absolutely correct in what I've challenged my team to do. We do an initiative right now called Field Contacts. As you may contact these individuals, challenge them to find out who they are, where they're from, and find out why they're here in the city of Jackson. As you stated, we have individuals as far as Detroit, Michigan, here in Jackson, Mississippi, breaking in businesses that are homeless, that are vagrants. So we're challenging them, we're finding out who they are, where they come from, more importantly, how are you here in the city of Jackson? What resources do you need? And we try to funnel them to those resources, but sometimes they don't want that help. They just want to be a transient and a panhandler. So we're working in collaboration with our federal partners as we do these field contacts. We're also working in collaboration with Capitol Police as well as we do those field contacts to share that information.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Chief. You're welcome. Colleagues, any other questions on this item? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right, it passes 6-0, clerk. All right, item number 13.
Order approving professional gymnasium floor maintenance services and authorizing payment to Sports Floors, Inc. for providing said services at Kurtz Gymnasium and Westside Gymnasium.
So moved, second.
All right, any questions or comments on this item? I think we have a little enthusiasm. Mr. Banks?
Yes, I guess my question, I thought I saw Abram here, is will this be done before tournament season?
God, I hope so.
Mr. Muhammad?
Is Dr. Muhammad here?
Dr. Muhammad.
He's out there looking like, who's calling?
He was speaking to the police.
Can someone please, here he comes. Dr. Muhammad, welcome. Thank you.
Hey, Doc.
Would you please repeat your question, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, the floor repair for the gyms at Kurtz and Westside, would this be done before tournament season?
Yes, sir.
It will be? Okay, good deal, all right.
The west side is to make sure that the subfloor is dried enough to where to put the top floor.
All right, when you go back outside, make sure you tell Chief Wade to tell his team no excuses.
No excuses to Chief Wade?
Yep.
Okay. Can I do that after hours so he still got his cover?
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Dr. Muhammad, when it's colder and wintertime, people have no idea how the gym, Airbase Gym is being utilized. That place is packed. I mean, it's packed every night, you know? A new floor can't hurt anything, but a lot of people are staying out of trouble in the wintertime because they playing ball.
Yes, sir.
You know, so keep up the good work, you know? I see what it is, because I ride that way all the time, and I see the number of people playing ball and utilizing the facility. And Madam President, I want to take one second. We had Reverend Dr. Stallworth just walked in the building into the council chamber and want to say hello to Reverend Dr. Stallworth, who's with us today.
Well, thank you. All right. Colleagues, any other questions or comments on this? All in favor? It's a vote of six zero, clerk. All right, item 14?
Order ratifying previously performed professional website services and authorizing payment to Alter Eco Designs and Consulting LLC for services performed for the Jackson Zoo and approving future professional website services and authorizing payments to Alter Eco in the amount of not to exceed $2,000.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Dr. Muhammad. Certainly appreciate all the hard work you're doing. We having a lot of events at the zoo.
Thank you.
A lot of fun, family, and good times. But one quick question, just the zoo overall. I know we don't have a capability of, of taking cards, credit cards and stuff. And I've, I've sat there and I watched, a lot of folks came in and that was the only means they had to pay. So what is the difficulty of us moving ahead with some type of credit card program?
Thank you for that question, Council Hartley. Thanks to the hard worker, Dr. Reed, her staff, and the finance department, we should have that taken care of in the next three weeks or so. There's a system in place now. We just have to get the equipment that would actually read your card in order to make electronic payments. So we've gotten with Dr. Reed, they've done an assessment, finance department is shoring up how the monies will be deposited once the electronic payment is made, and we'll be moving forward. So we should see a, a good increase in revenue taking place at the zoo now that we'll be able to take electronic payments.
And that's, that's, that was my point exactly. We have to show that we're making money. And when I see some of the folks turned around because they have no cash, it concerns me. I want to be the first one to swipe my card, okay?
You be second, I want to be the first one to work this for us. Thank you, sir.
All right, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, colleagues. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Thank you, Dr. Muhammad. All right, we are now moving on to item 15.
Order requesting ratification of killing companies previously provided golf course irrigation repair and upgrade services performed at the Pete Brown Golf Course and approving payment for the same in the amount of $1,680.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
Uh, state.
I got it.
Mr. Brazil?
Okay, thank you. First, Dr. Muhammad, is there any update on Grove Park?
Yes, sir. The update that we have for Grove Park is the administration and we actually have a meeting today set for 4:30 where we're looking at how we're going to repurpose and get Grove Park back online and exactly what that looks like. We're literally meeting today at 4:30 to discuss that.
And who, who cut the grass toward the, the baseball parks and the fields?
The, the grass in the baseball park?
Well, yeah, on that end, because you know Grove Park is, is kind of separated.
Yes, sir.
The side where the, the pool is and the baseball?
Yes, sir. We normally touch it, but I mean, it's not ours to do, but we normally take care of it.
They did a phenomenal job.
Thank you, sir.
I noticed that they, it was like thin hair over there, it was really nice.
Well, let me back up. Yes, sir, we take care of that.
No, okay. You got a little scared there for me.
I don't know who does that over there.
Nothing was blowing in the street, you could see lines, it was nice, real nice. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Colleagues, any other questions or comments? Mr. Stokes?
Doc, in, in, you used to word repurpose, Pete Brown Golf Course?
Yes, sir.
They had a family reunion there Saturday. Never knew that they could have family reunions at the golf course, but it was very successful.
Yes, sir.
I mean, the people played golf, the families who had the family reunion came from all over the United States, they enjoyed being at the golf course. And, you know, I, I think that you, you were thinking outside the box when you came up with that idea and, you know, just, just keep growing it because it's, it's slowly growing.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, Council Stokes. And I have to say the scripture say with a man rob God, so I have to give credit where credit due to hardworking staff out there at the golf course with Mr. Steve Hutton and the staff he has out there, thought of innovative ways that not only we can introduce people more to Pete Brown, but to bring in revenue as well and enjoy themselves at the same time. So I appreciate the hard workers staff that's there.
So now when you speak about Grove Park and repurpose?
Yes, sir.
Are you thinking about family reunions and other things maybe at their clubhouse also?
Oh, yes, sir. There, there are several things that we'll be discussing today that we haven't lined out, some are too numerous the names, but yes, sir, we will be taking a hard look at how to be able to offer more to our constituents as well as being able to take care of the business at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, any other ques, oh, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and I apologize for getting a little off topic, but we missed you yesterday, we could have had a chance to ask more questions.
I was on the phone.
Okay. Yes, you were.
Oh, yes, sir. You missed me physically being here.
I missed it every time. When I don't see you, I miss you.
Well, I appreciate it, because that means a lot.
Livingston Park, the disc golf?
Yes, sir.
Just quickly, when can we expect that?
Oh, that's, when you leave council meeting today, you'll see them already planting the flags. Literally, that's why I was running a little late getting here, meeting with them, they're mapping out everything now, we getting it going as we speak.
Okay. And another option to Grove Park for family reunions is Livingston Park, we have a lake there, okay?
Hopefully we can have more than just one family having a reunion.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brazil?
One more thing, I just got a text. Have y'all nailed down when the mayor's golf tournament is?
Yes, sir. August 30th.
August 30th, thank you.
I don't really play in it, so I never know, I just show up. I'm, I'm no good at golf, so.
Please let the record reflect that I did not make that statement.
All right, thank you. All right, colleagues, if there are no other questions or comments on this item, all in favor? It's six zero, thank you. Item number sixteen?
Order authorizing ratification and payment to Fisher Fire Extinguisher Service, Inc. for providing professional fire extinguisher and fire suppression system inspection services at Smith Wills Park, approving payment to Fisher Fire Extinguisher Services for purchase of two fire extinguishers, extinguishers, and authorizing future professional fire extinguishers and fire suppression system inspection services in an amount not to exceed $1,000.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor?
I'm abstaining on that, Madam President.
So we had five in favor, one abstention, Mr. Stokes, okay? All right, thank you. Item number seventeen?
Order ratifying plumbing repair services performed by United Plumbing and Heating Company, Inc. at the city's Vine Street Swimming Pool and approving payment for the same.
So moved.
Second. We did have some discussion on this yesterday, but any other questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? It's six zero, thank you. Item number eighteen?
Order ratifying veterinary services performed by All About Animals, Inc. at the Jackson Zoo and approving said company's provision of future veterinarian services to perform, to be performed at the Jackson Zoo for the months of August and September 2024.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Six zero, thank you. Item nineteen?
Order requesting approval of future professional painting services from, from and payments to Young's Painting Services, LLC for the provision of its painting services at the concession stands located at the V.A. Legion Softball Complex and at various other facilities operated by the city's Park and Recreation Department.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We also discussed this at work session. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, five, five zero, uh, five one, Mr. Stokes is abstaining. Item twenty?
Order ratifying and authorizing the mayor to accept past services provided by the Jackson Convention Complex to host the Neighborhood Services Divisions Planning Expo event held on April 27, 2024.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this. We did get some explanation on this yesterday.
This is?
This is item twenty. This is, the, the, this is about the event was April 27. Any other questions or comments, colleagues?
Why, why are we behind?
That's a good question, Mr. If, if, Mr. Stokes has questions, if someone could come forward and answer them.
This question was why are we behind?
Yeah.
April 27?
Reginald Jefferson, Housing and Community Development. Yes, this fell behind because of an employee that was mishandling accounts in our division. Since then, that employee has been, has resigned from the city. And since that has happened, we've been able to correct the, the accounts, and so that's why it's before the council today.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstaining.
All right, five in favor, one abstention. We're pulling 21. Item 22?
Order authorizing the mayor to accept additional grant funds from the National League of Cities Institute to create an equal business opportunity program.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Question.
Mr. Stokes?
Mr. Keaton? I'm sorry.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
What would be involved in creating this equal business opportunity program?
Good morning, Eka Hoover Economic Development. So we already have an equal business opportunity program, but it's race based. The, what we want to do is add a race neutral component to the program.
Okay, which would?
Which would not take into account any percentages, we would not need a disparity study, we would not have to worry about any legal ramifications of implementing something that's based on race. So based on race neutral, what we can do is we can utilize size of business, we can use the locality of the business in order to make sure that they have an opportunity to compete or be competitive with city projects.
Now, now using disparity study? What most, some major cities do then, and is successful, how did you come to that conclusion?
So this was modeled after Nashville, and yes, a lot of cities have decided to, instead of just focus on race based, also include a race neutral component.
Okay, now you mentioned Nashville, do you have any other success stories?
I, I don't have them with me, but Nashville is what this was modeled after.
Nashville East?
Nashville, Tennessee. So Nashville has the, has the same program that we want, we want to implement here. It is, it's just another side of the coin. So we can qualify businesses based on race, and then we can qualify businesses based on location.
So will the disparity study slowly disappear?
No, the disparity study is necessary if you want to strictly focus on race. But in this case, we want to do both. We want to walk and chew gum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Banks and then Mr. Hartley?
Nah, she, uh, you could just, just, I mean, this, this doesn't prevent us from doing what people know as the traditional disparity study. The importance of that is being able to require a percentage for us to be able, you know, the disparity study that you're talking about, that we need to do as far as to be able to require a percentage, as far as to be able to require mentor protege, and for us to be able to require joint ventures. And so this, this is a good program. My friend, Councilwoman Tanaka Virtue, out of Nashville, helped implement this program. But at the same time, we do need to find the funding to make sure we do a disparity study so that we can require those contractors to hire at a, at a higher percentage rate.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and, and I wholeheartedly agree. That disparity, disparity study will allow us to keep from having to bicker around with, when, when it comes to minority contractors. Yesterday, you mentioned that there was 5%, and I was trying to get to, okay, what's an understanding? In the city with 80, 80% African American population, 5% was that the amount of money that we've given to, to the minority businesses? Or was that the amount of contracts that we're, that we're giving? Can you explain that 5%?
So again, this was data from 2020, and that would be the amount of money.
So only 5% of our money in the City of Jackson is going to minority participation?
Back in 2020 yet. I don't have any other data for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of five zero, uh, six zero, thank you. Item 23?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Grace House, Inc. to award 2020 upward funds in the amount of $2,935.56.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. I apologize. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Six zero, thank you. Item number 23, 24?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, Shirley A. Cleveland, and MultiCom, Inc. for the use of CDBG funds to implement housing repair activities under the Department of Planning and Development's limited repro, week, repair program.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item?
Question.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. How much money do we have left in this program?
Reginald Jefferson Housing and Community Development. I will have to get with my staff to get the exact amount, the exact balance that we have left in CDBG. Now, you mentioning CDBG or for this particular limited repair program?
Well, you have senior citizens and citizens as a whole saying that they need help with their home, they need help with bathroom repair and these kind of things. So I will ask how much money we had left, so as citizens ask her, or ask us, then we can identify who they need to talk with and whether they have a chance to get some help versus them saying, you send us the people, but we never getting the help.
Yes, sir. We'll say that for our rehab programs, and right now we have two programs that are active. We have our CDBG Limited Repair as well as our Healthy Homes Production Grant. We'll say for those two programs, they are not restrict, restricted by age. Now, for our Healthy Homes Production Grant, that is not an annual allotment that we receive. That is the case with CDBG. Now, we'll say for our Limited Repair Program, it comes from CDBG, we have an annual allotment. Right now, I would need to get the, as far as to date, as today's date, what the balance is, and I can get that to you. But now for the application period, as you're talking about people wanting to apply. We have halted the application intake process just because of the response that we've gotten with our citizens, and we're using this time to process the applications that we have received. We are encouraging residents to continue to call in, be placed on our waitlist, but we have been using this time to go ahead and process the applicants, the applications that we have received.
When will it open up again?
Unfortunately, I do not have that answer right now as far as the application intake process. We do have over 200 applications that we have in-house right now. I hesitate to give you a net exact number, I would like to say within a year, but I don't want you to hold me to that just yet.
It's all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, sir. And first of all, thank you so much for this program. It really benefits a lot of our elderly folks that need home repairs, and I want to make sure I continue pushing this program. What is the telephone number that, that folks need to call in if they're interested in getting an application or more information on it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, any other questions or comments on this? If not, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Item 25?
Order ratifying purchase of certain commodities from Ace Boat and Screw Company, Inc. and and authorizing payment to said vendor.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and Mr. Hartley made the second. Um, any questions or comments on this item, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Six zero, thank you. Item number 26.
Order authorizing mayor to enter to an agreement with the Jackson Resource Center to serve as consultant for the city of Jackson to conduct evaluation assessment for the W.K. Kellogg Foundation-funded project, "Economic Pathways to Human Dignity: Building Occupational Opportunities in Economic Growth."
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstained.
Opposed?
Abstained.
All right, so we got two abstentions, and you got it. All right, thank you. All right. Item number 27.
Order authorizing mayor to execute an engineering services agreement with EJES, Inc. for the Country Club Drive Bridge 4031 Country Club Drive Replacement Project.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? Six zero, thank you. Item number 28.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an engineering services agreement with EGA, EGEES, Inc. for the Country Club Drive Project at Peter Quinn Drive and Country Club Drive Replacement Project.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Stokes.
These items we voted on today, uh, Mr. Mayor, they, I know we got engineering involved. Do we have enough money to complete the pro, the process, the project, uh, engineering only?
I believe that there, uh, are sources of funding that can complete these projects. Uh, the timeline of that, I'm, I'm uncertain. I think we need to get the engineering specs back before we know when those projects will be completed.
I know Mr. Wright told us on the Monica Keane project, we got to do the engineering first. Then we move toward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Brazil?
Mr. Wright, uh, Supervisor District Two keeps asking me about this bridge. And, um, have y'all met with him on this?
Louis Wright, C.A.O., we have met with Supervisor, uh, in District Two regarding bridges in her area, especially the Shaw Road Bridge.
No, no, this should be.
That's the man.
Uh, yeah, this is Tony Smith. Cause when I met with him Friday, he keeps bringing it up. I said, you know, that's not my war.
Yeah, which, which bridge is he?
Uh, Peter Quinn off of Country, Country Club, somewhere up in there.
Yeah.
Uh, and I just keep asking me. I said, you want to have some money you trying to spend? So if you have been talking to him, I'm gonna back out of there, but, you know.
Okay.
Get all you can.
Okay. We will. We'll do that.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it's six zero. All right. Item 29.
Order ratifying the contract with Delta Constructors for emergency storm sewer repairs at 135 Yucca Drive.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Um, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Did you vote for it?
Yeah.
You voted for it? Okay, it's six zero, thank you. All right. Item number 30.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a right-of-way instrument with Entergy Mississippi LLC to provide a new electrical feed to the city of Jackson Planetarium.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments on the Planetarium project? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstained.
Mr.?
No.
In favor?
No.
Uh, opposed? Okay, so we have Mr. Hartley abstained, Mr. Stokes voted in opposition, and the rest were in favor. All right. Item 31 was pulled. Pardon me. Pardon me. Um, item 32.
Yeah.
Oh, we did 32. I'm sorry, I forgot to scratch it off. All right, so we've done 33, 34. I apologize with my voice. My husband's always very happy when this happens. All right, so 34. All right, so 35, colleagues.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute settlement and general release agreement between TransDev Services, Inc. and the city of Jackson, Mississippi to resolve the final closeout invoice.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Council President Lindsay, I think there's an amendment.
Oh, was there an amendment? I didn't, did I get, I didn't get a note on that, I don't think.
Do you want to hold it?
Okay. I did not know about that one. I apologize.
Sheridan Carr, Special Assistant to the City Attorney Litigation. Um, my apologies, I sent the amendment this morning, um, and I provided a copy, um, with the clerk. The amendment is actually to the settlement agreement itself. Um, page two, first paragraph, last sentence. Um, and I have copies for you all.
Madam President?
Yes, sir. You need, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Uh, so clarity, the, the amendment is to the amount?
No, there's no change in the amount. The, the TransDev already paid us certain funds, so we just included a clause in there that after we participate in arbitration, um, the funds that we've already received from TransDev will go back to TransDev.
Okay, can you state it?
Oh, just read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not long, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay. Just state the amendment.
The city agrees that any award less than $190,131.12 shall be due back to TransDev for services rendered for the December 2023 fixed route invoice.
So move according to the statement that the city attorney's office.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the proposed amendment. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, the amendment passes six zero. Now we have the item before us as amended. Now, any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, it was a vote of five to one. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item 36.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims against the city of Jackson in the lawsuit caption Nader Pallavan and Christina Pallavan versus the city of Jackson et al. in the county court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District Civil Action Number 22-3834.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Drew Martin, City Attorney. This is one we need to take up in, uh, executive session.
Oh, okay. So we, then we will need to, uh, who made, who made the motion and who made the second?
Uh, take maybe my second.
Do you have to explain this? Or is it something that we can either?
It'll be very brief, but I do need to provide a brief explanation on it.
Okay. All right, I will draw my second.
I will draw mine.
Okay, you made the motion. Okay. All right, the motion is we will hold this item, item 36, until we get into executive session at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Item 37.
Order authori, order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims against the city of Jackson in the consolidated lawsuit referred as Mason 1, Mason 2, and E. Lee in the Circuit Court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District Civil Action Number 25C1118-CV00207.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this?
Can we get some of the facts?
Yes. Brief. Drew Martin, City Attorney. Uh, brief facts on this case. On January 13th, 2017. Okay, just read this. Yeah. Uh, Heinz County Sheriff's Department conducted an administrative, well, let me not read it. Uh, this was, we talked about this one once before. This was a, uh, police checkpoint that was set up by Heinz County. Um, ultimately, the person that, uh, an individual fled that checkpoint was pursued by law enforcement. He then, uh, during that, uh, while fleeing, ran into another car and killed three individuals. Um, this is the settlement of those claims.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Stokes? You have more? You need, you have anything else?
Yeah, just, the amount that we see today is a partial payment? That's not?
That's the entire payment from the city.
Is there other?
Heinz County, uh, was also a defendant and has a separate resolution.
Is the payment larger for them or?
Uh, I don't actually know what the terms of theirs are, but my strong suspicion is yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, um, what's the amount of the payment?
Uh, I believe it's $76,000 in total.
Okay. And that is the staff recommendation that we pay the $76?
Yes.
Uh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand, how, how's the city negligent in this?
So to get farther into that, I'd want to, I wouldn't want to go into that publicly. It is one we discussed previously, and I can briefly remind you.
Okay. Um.
Well, I, I can answer it this way. This, this is a short answer. Uh, there are eyewitness, there were eyewitness statements, uh, that we dispute. Uh, but there are eyewitness statements, uh, uh, putting JPD as part of the chase.
And this is a, and this is obviously your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Has the other side agreed to this?
Yes, sir. This, this is a concluded settlement once the council approves it.
Okay.
All right, colleagues. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? It's a vote of four to two. Excuse me. Item 38.
Order authorizing the mayor to renew and execute a rental agreement between the city of Jackson, Mississippi, and Pittney Bowes for a postage meter machine for use by the Office of the City Attorney.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstained.
We've got five in favor. Mr. Stokes abstained. All right. Um, item 39. And I think we've got an amended copy on this, but let's get it on the floor.
Order authorizing the procurement of property insurance in the amount of $25 million underwritten by the multiple insurance carriers, including but not limited to Lord's, Lexington, AIG, National Property and Marine, Ironshore, Westchester, Access Endurance, Sum, Sumpo, Kinscale, Riverton, Beasley, Evans, Markel, and Ark Ethos.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Did you flip this?
It's being passed out.
Thank you.
Drew Martin, City Attorney, it's being passed out right now. There's a, a small amendment, uh, that was only on page one to take out the reference to the $25 million, uh, portion of the, uh, that was previously referenced. That is, uh, that number, and Mr. Johnson's here to explain if, if there are any questions, but that number, uh, is potentially different depending on what elections the city makes. But in all events, the insurance coverage will be full, and the premiums will be, uh, a maximum. My voice is listed already in the order, what was in the order yesterday.
Could you just read the amendment?
I need to see the first page.
The proposed amendment, rather.
Well, I don't have, let's see.
Is it, what's in red down here?
I don't have the original. It's up here amended.
It's in the heading, isn't it?
My page, my first page of the original was missing. I apologize, I can't tell you where, where it goes. There were two, there's two strikes. Do you have page one of the original?
Mm-hmm. I think one is in the heading.
So in the heading, the original said, "Order authorizing the procurement of property insurance uh, in the amount of $25 million." Strike in the amount of $25 million? And then the same change should be made in the fourth whereas last line. Take out strike in the amount of $25 million.
Okay. Thank you. All right, colleagues, um, I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, um, to accept this amendment as proposed by the legal department. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Of the amendment as proposed?
Abstained.
Okay. Opposed? Like, how did you vote, Mr.? Did you say opposed? Uh, they voted for it, okay. So we have five in favor and one abstaining on the amendment. All right, we now have the item before us as amended. Uh, any questions or comments? Mr. Johnson is here. If you have any questions, we did discuss it yesterday in work session. All right? If there are no other questions, all in favor? Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, so we have one abstention, two opposing, and three in favor. So it fails, right?
No, it passed.
Three, two, one. Okay, passes. I'm not sure about that.
I think we still have questions about that.
I think we still have questions about that.
Council President, at three, two, one, you don't have a majority of the quorum present.
Okay. It wa, I'm sorry.
You don't have a majority of the, of the quorum present with, with three, only three votes. You need a fourth vote.
That's right. So it fails.
Mostly considered.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor to reconsider.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider. All in favor? Okay, passes six zero with the color. Please read the item.
Order authorizing the procurement of property insurance in the amount of $25 million underwritten by the multiple insurance carriers, including but not limited to Lord's, Lexington, AIG, National Property and Marine, Ironshore, Westchester's, Access Endurance, Sumpo, Kinsale, Riverton, Beasley, Evans, Sun, Markel, and Ark Ethos.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. We have a proposed amendment. Attorney, could you just tell us very quickly what the amendment is?
I, I moved, I moved if we had a man to remove $25 million in the heading and in the, uh, fourth whereas. Fourth whereas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Wait a minute. Excuse me, Mr. Williamson. Oh, yes, excuse me, yes. For, note for the record, Mr. Stokes is left. We have five council people on the dance. All right, so we now have the amendment, uh, proposed amendment on the, uh, before us, all in favor of the amendment. Okay, thank you. Now, the item is back before us as amended. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? It carries with a vote of three to two. It carries with a vote of three to two. Thank you, colleagues. All right, now, nothing like a little gymnastics this morning. All right, so now we're moving on to item forty.
Order reviewing and continuing August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, state of emergency.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it carries with a vote of six zero. Mr. Stokes, let it be known, is back in the room. All right, now we are moving on to item forty-one.
Order reviewing and continuing state of emergency.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? You're in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It's a vote of six zero. Item forty-two.
Order of the Jackson City Council authorizing payment to Mayor Percy Jackson in the amount of ten thousand dollars for damage to their automobile.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Could this this order doesn't have a lot of detail to it. Mr. Stokes, would you like to explain this?
Thank you. What I would like to do is ask Mr. Jackson if he'll come to the podium, and he can explain exactly what happened and and what they went through and everything.
They spoke on public comment.
Well, they clarified.
I'm sorry, say again.
I just wanted to clarify that Mr. Percy Jackson, along with Ms. Anderson, when they that was who spoke for public comment?
Yeah.
That was the issue they spoke for.
Thank you, Mr. Banks, okay. Go, please state your name for the record, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Jackson, tell what happened.
Oh, well, I was coming down over on the University Boulevard. You know, I seen the driver in the street, but I didn't know that was the car. I thought it was covered up. And then when I ran across it, the stank hole hit my tire and busted my tire, and I couldn't straighten it back up.
So what happened at that point?
After that.
Did you almost, did you hit a pole?
Yes, sir. I ran into the pole, but I couldn't straighten it back up.
Okay, now, just kind of calm down and explain to the people the danger your life was in and where the vehicle now.
Well, I was most concerned about my wife, because she was on the passing side, and she had already been in a bad car accident. So I'm most concerned about her than I was myself.
Okay.
And so I tried to get her to go to the hospital, but she didn't want to go. She was so upset.
What was the damage to the car?
Well, I tore all the front off, because I had an iron pole right here. I could have hit the iron pole. It would have been more worse. But I hit the wood pole instead of the iron pole.
And once you hit the wooden pole, the car was destroyed?
Yes, sir.
And because of this situation with the street?
Yeah.
Car destroyed. You have no transportation there?
No, no, no way to get around.
No way to get around?
No.
Can you afford a brand-new car, another car?
No, sir, because I'm on a fixed-end car. And I just get a check once a month.
And do you think that what we have on the agenda to pay you ten thousand dollars would help you?
Yes, sir. It would help me get another vehicle.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Jackson. And I'm so sorry this has happened. Mr. Stokes, the concern I have about this, my heart is just breaking for the Jacksons, and I feel a great deal of compassion for them, but there is no supporting documentation for this. Can you possibly get us, at the very least, an estimate from a body shop or something? I mean, there's nothing here to support this.
I think they have it.
I still think we
We'll be glad to.
I still think we need to go through the proper process with that.
We'll be glad to.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
We allow them to present it to the clerk, and then we are
Okay. So
We'd like to give it to the clerk.
The clerk, I'm sorry.
And then we'll bring it back on the agenda.
And this is the item, too, where I think the mayor said that we need to have a conversation. We need to have Mr. Alter talk to Jackson Water as well. Isn't that right? That's right.
I will talk to Jackson Water. I will send a communication on there, but, you know, I don't know what the council's will and pleasure is going to be, but I will send I will send a letter on their behalf, as I promised to do.
Mr. Stokes, would you be willing to hold this item until we can get communication from Jackson Water and the documentation, you know, through the
Well, I'd be glad to hold it for the documentation to get it on the next agenda. That gives us two weeks.
Okay.
But they were dead in the transportation, can't get around, poor people, and it wasn't in the fault of their own. Again, I still say, these still sit on Jackson streets. Whether Jackson Water is out here doing work in our streets, we should have people out here making sure that they tell Jackson Water that this is not done right, do it right, or don't do it at all.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. We're going to hold this item for two weeks. Mr. Attorney?
Madam Chair, I withdraw my second.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you very much, and to the Jackson family. I'm so sad. We'll have this on the next agenda. All right, item forty-three.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, vote of no confidence in the city attorney Drew Martin.
So move. For the sake of discussion, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Madam President, Madam President, this item is so important for the city of Jackson. So many citizens in this city feel that the city of Jackson is not for them. The city of Jackson does not care what happened to certain people, certain neighborhoods, certain communities. In order for the city of Jackson to be one city, we must make all citizens feel that they are all part of this city. I believe, and I want to correct the record from the misdemeanor of the mayor, that this is all because of item that we had on the agenda asking for security at the stores. We had a vote on that that the clerk can attest to, and everybody can get a copy of it. This is about caring. This is not the first time in this city that we have had businesses where black people, citizens, are dying. I take some back to the memory of Williams Lounge, not even a half a mile from the Texaco station. People were dying at Williams Lounge. That city attorney thought enough came before this body, went to court under the nuisance statute, got relieved. Williams Lounge has been closed ever since. I'm saying when you care and you care about these citizens, you're not going to use excuses why not to do something. You're going to work hard to do something. Makes no sense, people dying. The grandmother called me yesterday. People dying at this Texaco. And the citizens speaking out, more and more and more. If this station was in another part of this city, something would have been done. Something must be done. We have other convenience stores, service stations, where people have died and the nuisance statute has been used. There's no federal law against using the nuisance statute in Mississippi. And if the mayor's saying there's federal law, says we can't do that, that's absolutely wrong. We have done it before. And that's what we're saying. We're saying that this legal department, through its director, should have thawed outside the box and come with a solution to make these citizens feel that they are important in this city, that they are somebody in this city, and not that they can just get shot down, killed at this location, and nobody give a doggone. I'm saying that's why I have a vote of no confidence against this attorney. We have prior attorneys who did something. It's on record. He can research it. If he didn't want to listen to me, he could have researched this stuff. There's nothing wrong with the nuisance statute. He could have used it. And these citizens went and had to go their children going to buy Coca-Cola or candy and got to watch a dead body. Hopefully, it's covered up, because they tried to cover it up after a period of time. That child got to see blood. That's inhumane. And that's not the Jackson, Mississippi, I know and love. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hartley.
Yes, and I appreciate Councilman Stokes bringing this issue up because we have a lot of the same neighborhoods and a lot of the same type problems. And I feel as though a lot of times, it's not getting the attention that it needs. So some folks have to speak up. Every week, I get a call or a text or something from a neighborhood, from a lady who's lost her son, and she's wondering what can be done. The killer's still out there. And then, you know, the last time we went to this discussion, we were asking about ordinance, and we're asking about cameras, and we keep getting the answer, "Well, we can't do this, we can't do that." But in fact, you know, I live in this neighborhood, and these, and Councilman Stokes, live in the neighborhood, and these are issues that have to be addressed. These are our priorities. People are dying. Dying. And I think the last time we had an issue come up, I asked the council, and whether it's to whatever is going on with this, but that message has to be clear. This is the priority. Shuffling off something else you're doing to make sure the planetarium is taken care of, that's not a priority in my ward. People dying at that corner station, people feeling uncomfortable to go there, that's not the priority. That's the priority in my ward. Commerce, safety, and health, that's the priority. People calling you that have lost their kids just randomly, that's the priority. And unless, you know, unless we don't focus on these as the priority, and my question is, apparently, number one, you don't live in the neighborhood. You're out there where this is not a priority in your world. You're out there. Stop by the corner stores if you dare in my neighborhood. If you dare. We are, we have to make the priorities the main thing. And right now, still haven't heard anything back on the camera ordinance, the status of it, other ordinances. So whether this be censer of the attorney or whatever this is, this need to be an awakening that just because you don't live in this neighborhood, you work for the city of Jackson, and this is your priority. I don't know what other way to say it. This can't be way, way down on the list. People are dying, man. They're dying.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I'm just a bit taken back because I'm trying to under-understand. You know, one, we are the legislative branch of government. The mayor is the executive. Our responsibility is to provide counsel. We make laws. We come up with budget that is executed. Our city attorney's office, they advise us, but then whatever laws we write or we pass, it is their job to defend. I'm hearing conversation as if the two ordinances that came before us did not pass. They passed.
That's what I say.
No, no, no.
Wait a minute, Mr. Hartley.
Let me finish talking.
Please, please, please. I'm letting you talk.
The enforcement of those ordinances is not on the city attorney's office. So I'm trying to understand, because I don't want to because there are people that work in the city attorney's office who are young mothers, who are fresh out of law school, and this could make them or make people just be sick with wanting to work in a municipality anywhere, especially when we're talking about young black women that work in city legal. And so I'm trying to understand, because once we pass an ordinance and it's voted on, it takes thirty days. It has to be signed. Then the council has to approve the minutes. Did we give them opportunity to try to enforce what we just passed two weeks ago? So either this is a personal attack because we don't like the way somebody look, because we don't like the way they talk, or because we don't like how they do that. But at the end of the day, there is processes in government. We haven't even given them the opportunity to see if they can do it. The mayor said that he would work. We said that we will work on We amended that ordinance from the floor to try to find a way to make it work. And he said that if anyone challenged it, that his office would defend it. So I, Madam President, in lots of words, I'm trying to understand, you know, we're up here, but then there are processes. And I understand, you know, Mr. Hart, I hear you, you know, you know, all of that comes to the hood, but that has nothing to do with him doing his job. The only way we could judge him on his job is if someone challenged the law and it went to court. That has not happened. And so right now, that law was passed, and we have to make sure that we do what's necessary, and it's up to the administration to make sure that whatever department is responsible enforces it. Are you?
Mr. Manger?
Yes. Let me say that I'm for truth, no matter who's telling it. I'm for justice, no matter who it's for or against. In this situation, first, let me clarify what my words were. You said that your proposal of a vote of no confidence was not about the security guards. Well, that's a clarification, and I accept your clarification. My statement of the lack of constitutionality was, one, regarded to the security guards, and Drew nor I were ever against it. What I went over to Drew and said immediately after the vote, and he agreed, I said, "Make it constitutional." Meaning, do all that you can to support the wishes and desires of this council, which I agree with what you're trying to do. I will say what Drew won't say in this moment. Drew actually was a bit hurt by this because he's gone above and beyond to establish relationships with each council member, including you, Councilman Stokes, because he's talked about how he's discussed other gas stations with you. And he said that he didn't know that this was one that was a concern. Now, I shared with him, yeah, this is one that's a concern. The administration has already been working in order to start moving forward on the nuisance deployment, and I told him that I'm in full favor of identifying where nuisance is. In fact, the police chief, along with other departments, we met at the we called all of these gas stations. We went through the list, and we looked at what were the gas stations that had the most frequent 911 calls, and we invited them so that we could first have a conversation about the issues that they were having, and that if they did not look at investing in security, what the possible implications could be to them. To be clear to our residents, what's different from now and the past is that the state legislature passed a law. We're going to talk about facts. They passed a law that limited the liability of property owners from what it used to be. Gas station owners used to employ security services because they knew that they faced the risk of being sued and losing it all. Now that the state legislature changed their liability, that's a cost that they said, "Listen, because I don't have to worry about losing it," right? "Then I don't have to deploy the cost of hiring security guards." Who does it hurt in the final analysis? It hurts cities like Jackson. And so I think it's incredibly unfair when someone who's trying to find ways in order to advise us to make certain that we don't get sued, when someone who is defending the city on several matters of litigation, protecting us each and every day, someone who may just be overworked is now being accused of, let's call it what it is, being racist because he doesn't live in a community. I'm the first one. Well, when you're talking about you don't live in the neighborhood, that's what you're implying, right? And so
Don't do that.
So I'm the first one to call things out when I think that there's a bias, when I think that there's inequity, when I think that someone isn't caring, and I don't see that in Drew. And so I think it's incredibly unfair that all at once, these things that we've been dealing with for years at this point, and he hadn't even been the city attorney for a year. For a year. Let's be clear on that. Things we've been dealing with for years, he hasn't been the city attorney for a year, and all of a sudden, we're charging him as if he doesn't have a heart to serve, and that's incredibly unfair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stokes. I apologize. I did not see your hand raised. And so, Mr. Stokes?
Miss Madam Chair, I think I was
Mr. Stokes was first, and then you.
Madam President, the the issue of security guards never was an issue, and that's why I'm glad Councilman Banks brought it up. The mayor brought that up and said it was an issue. That's how I got to the media. He's against him because he don't want to support security guards. And the item passed, and that's what Banks was saying. The issue that we have always dealt with is the same thing that is taking place in these communities, and they use nuisance. Young men here today, they're the press conference, use nuisance. I see it nuisance. The issue is can't-do mentality versus can do. That's what the issue is. Can't do. He's so busy trying to please the mayor that he's not concerned about the citizens. Citizens must be number one. You can't allow citizens to die in these neighborhoods and nothing be done about it. You can't say, "Well, we sent a letter to them. They supposed to come talk to us." People dying. And I still see if this is happening in another neighborhood, something would have been done. And we're going to keep protesting. I don't have the authority to fire him, but I have the authority to put on the general vote of no confidence. He's got to be respectful to black people in this city where they poor, rich, fat or skinny. You do not sit here and watch people die, and every time people try to bring up a suggestion, "Let's do this or let's do that," and you don't even explore nuisance. Other lawyers, other judges, people coming to, "Ken, why y'all not going nuisance?" This man's a certified qualified lawyer. He no nuisance. I bet you if it was his loved one that was out there dead, he'd do something. I bet you if it was his loved one that was out there dead, he'll do something. If it's my loved one out there dead, he'll do something. So why do he treat these people he consider nobodies in such a disrespectful way? We not talking about no security guard. Don't poison the issue, Mr. Mayor. We know that's a smokescreen you put out there to the media. We talking about nuisance. That's the issue. Nuisance. Not security guards that pass. Don't play with this. This is serious. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I, I'm gonna allow one more comment and then I'm gonna call for the vote, um, unless. Did I see somebody else's hand? I missed, if I missed. Okay, so I'll allow two more and then I'm gonna call for the vote. Mr. Hartley and then Mr. Banks.
Yes, first of all, um, I'd like to, I'd like to clarify something. The word racist never even entered my mind. The word racist, the implication of racist have nothing to do with this. This has to do with where the person lives and the priorities around them. And if you don't live where these priorities are, then perhaps it's not your, really, you don't have a good way of understanding it as a priority. The second thing is, I agree with Councilman Stokes. Perhaps we need to go, and we could have this discussion later, but to a law firm, someone is not afraid to just, hey, just, you tell them to do something and they go out and do it. They examine all the things within the parameters of the law and they just not afraid to, hey, look, this is a state of emergency. Wha- Don't give me all the why we can't. Give me how can we be proactive, look for those solutions. Because we're thinking about it, the public thinking about it, but be proactive. And, and also, folks in West Jackson, we believe in what we see. You can have all the fuzzy words, all the long speeches. Show us something. Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin. I brought you, uh, uh, for your comment, a city ordinance. Potential city ordinance on cameras. Have we, have we done anything? Have we passed anything? Just a question, yes or no. Have we passed anything concerning city cameras or cameras?
You've asked, I'm gonna give you more than yes or no, but the answer is yes. The city council, in fact, did pass the security ordinance with cameras. And the further answer is yes. I have with me today, uh, my suggested amendments to that ordinance that I would propose. They also include, in addition to what was already in that ordinance, uh, the authority to declare a property, I can't remember the term we used, but to identify properties where any crime of violence occurs, for the JPD to be able to label that property, to be able to require them to have the same surveillance that the ordinance would otherwise require at gas stations and convenience stores, and for that authority to continue for about a 12-month period until they can show that no violence is occurring at that property. So I'll be handing that out to you today before we leave.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, and it brings up another issue, but, and that is that we have to know that kind of information.
That's why I just gave it to you.
Or, or there will be a certain amount of frustration that's nothing is getting done. And secondly, I'd like for JPD, if they are anywhere around, to make sure that they have a packet ready. I have folks that are ready for those cameras. They just need to be delivered a packet where they can sign off and they can get started.
I'd like to encourage my colleagues to stay on topic, please. We, that, that this, what is before us is a resolution. And so, Mr. Hartley, I appreciate your comments, but I'm asking that we stay on topic.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry. I thought that the, uh, performance as it relates to community of the legal department was the subject of Councilman Stokes bringing this up.
Mr. Hartley, could you please wrap it up? Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Uh, Attorney Martin Drew and to the city attorney's office, I apologize. Um, what you have been a victim of is called othering. Uh, it is something that happens, um, through all races, through classism. It says, because you're not from this block or you're not from this block, then you don't understand. It's called othering. Which, which, which is a great divide line in this country. And unfortunately, it's a divide line within our own race. Uh, because the, for a long time, people always tried to say that the reason why we have this concept of othering because we're not the same. But the opposite of othering is not the same. It's togetherness. And, and it's hearing from people like me saying, regardless if you're white, Drew, you belong in this city. And regardless if you stay in a rich part of town, you belong with the city because you've been helpful and you've been transparent. Uh, I also just want to state for the record and make sure it's clear that when it comes to the enforcement of the ordinances, when we talk about declaring something a nuisance, the city attorney's office does not declare something a nuisance. That is done by the Department of Planning. When those things come up to us based on those sections on our nuisance laws, the department code enforcement goes out, they examine, they look at those properties based on the ordinances or the laws or the statutes that are provided. They declare the nuisance. Legal looks at it for its sufficiency and that it is provided on the agenda, and then we have the final say-so and vote it up or down. With that, Councilman, uh, Council President Lindsay, I call the question and I yield.
Um, Ms. Madam President, that's not true.
Wait, wait, Mr. Stokes, the question has been called and we have, I, I have been extremely lenient throughout this. Everybody's had a chance to say what they've needed to say.
Only thing I'm saying is this.
Okay.
There's no way.
Make it quick.
There's no way Williams Lounge, that planning department went out there, gave it to legal. Peter Taverson through our legal department did Williams Lounge. And what he said is not true and it's not accurate.
All right. Um, colleagues, the question has been called. All in favor of this, uh, resolution? Raise your hands. All in favor. Opposed. Bails with a vote of 42. Thank you. All right, colleague, um, audience, please, please. Uh, that's really, uh, we just need to move on. You know, there are times when we don't all agree with something or someone's stance, but at the end of the day, we do need to respect what everyone has to say. And so that's where we are. All right, colleagues, we're pulling item 44. We're moving now on to discussion items. Um, we, first thing we have, Mr. Stokes, is yours, the traffic light projects?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Madam President, it was brought to my attention that, uh, something called the traffic light projects. Uh, we see a number of traffic lights out. So I know we don't have a public works director. I don't know if Mr. Wright gonna tell us what the traffic light project is, or mayor, who's gonna tell us what is the traffic light project?
Uh, yes. Um, once again, the work hasn't stopped. Uh, and so along with that, while we've been hearing, uh, several resident concerns and we've been witnessing on our own several issues with traffic lights, uh, we've been issuing to the media each week, I think for about a month now, uh, maybe a little over, uh, a status of each one of the lights that is out. Uh, we initially gave rationale or we gave the explanation as to what happened to the lights. Uh, we talked about the contractors that are now working on those lights. And we've been getting status updates each week and watching the list go down. Uh, and so that's what we're referring to. Uh, I think Lewis has the latest, uh, numbers of how many have been repaired and uh, how many are still in need of repair. So it's just simply, uh, providing information to the residents. That's what we've been doing.
How's it funded?
You passed a contract to hire Lewis Electric, uh, here from the council. I don't know how you voted, but there was a contract passed to, I, I, I don't know. Uh, but there was a contract passed by the council to pay for this. Uh, we brought this before you some time ago. And so this is happening under that, this isn't some separate and distinct project. This is just, uh, routine work that we've contracted to do.
Um, could the clerk possibly find that order that we passed and get it to Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, because we had other lights that were out that was not on that item that we passed. So that's why I said, how's it funded?
Uh, let me, let me be clear. Some of the work was able to be accomplished in-house. That's what the list talked about. It talked about who's doing it from Lewis Electric, who's doing it from our internal, um, our internal division. It depends on the light. Sometimes it was cabinets. Sometimes it was a part here. Sometimes it was because someone hit the, uh, the cabinet. Sometimes somebody hit the, the pole or uh, any number of things. They're, they're not all the same circumstance. And so the solution and the fix is not all the same for each one of them.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Stokes? All right. Mr. Stokes, you're up next with item number 46, crime.
Uh, Madam President, we'll hold that to the next meeting. A young lady wanted to come and speak on that. She talked about the gentleman who ran over the young man. He came on her porch yesterday. And feel like nobody has done anything to arrest the gentleman or anything else. So we want to talk about crime and, and what we're gonna do to reduce it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right. Uh, Mr. Foot, White Oak Creek?
Thank you, Madam President. We had a good, uh, discussion at the work session yesterday about White Oak Creek, the need to supplement the $2 million that the county has to, um, from the state legislature to repair a big chunk of White Oak Creek. And I hope we can come up with some funds from, um, the city budget, perhaps the, um, modernization tax funds. And, um, the, the people that made their presentation felt like they were very encouraged by the responses from the administration and the council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Foot. Um, be sure and keep us posted on that. Um, status of the rubbish landfill, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Miss Pres- Madam President, uh, uh, several weeks last month, I believe, I went out in the landfill. The load in the landfill was, uh, wasn't, wasn't open. Wasn't operating, uh, I guess due to equipment que- uh, issues. Uh, and I know that that's a big source, that's a source of revenue for the solid waste division for the city of Jackson, and it's a place for us to take all our rubbish material. Uh, I wanted to get an update on, uh, perhaps what are the problems at the landfill? And when can we expect, or is it back online, or when can we expect it to be back online?
Lakeisha Weather Solid Waste. Um, the landfill, um, I know you keep saying it's closed. Landfill is not closed. The open face of the, um, the current open face, however, is, however, we are still taking in white goods and tires. So the landfill is open. Um, there is no space in the open face currently. Uh, town's construction is in the process of opening the, uh, new sale or the extension. They will be complete by August the 15th, and then we will be fully back operational.
I'm sorry, what was that date again?
August 15th.
August 15th?
Yes.
And so, but bef- before August 15th, how long, what, we're talking about a month or so? And, um, we haven't been generating a revenue because I know when, well, perhaps from tires, we get a few dollars.
We do get, uh,
And for metal goods, that's simply just.
We do get, um, we do get revenue from metal recycling. Yes, we do get revenue from those things.
And so the problem is we're out of space.
We're out of space. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. All right. Um, the next item is Thal Yamar Hall, and I wanted to ask the city attorney if that is something we can discuss in open, um, session, or if that is something we need to discuss in executive session at this time.
Madam, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Manger.
Just as, by way of information, Mike Williams is on the call to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I think based on my understanding of the, the discussion to be had, at least some of it should be in executive sessions. I would, I would recommend that.
All right. So, um, can we go ahead and talk a little bit, uh, can we talk in open session about at least some of the issues that we're having? And I don't know if that's you or the mayor, Mr. Mayor, one of you, um, or Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams could give us a brief. I just want the right person talking.
I will do so, uh, with the request that, you know, if I need to be stopped, you, you, you jump out and stop me.
Sure, sure.
So there are just, there are repairs. Uh, Thal Yamar Hall is old. Um, it's beautiful, uh, in my opinion, but it is old. And so there are a number of things that need to be repaired. The air conditioning unit uh, is operating at a reduced capacity and it has been, according to what Mike shared with me, for about 12 years. That has not stopped events from taking place. What they typically do uh, is contract for chillers, uh, to, to be connected and support the air conditioning unit. Um, they have to verify the weight capacity of the, um,
The rigging.
The rigging system. Uh, not all performances require rigging. Uh, and so we have someone who's coming on board in order to, uh, in order to determine the weight capacity. Uh, those, those, um, acts that require the use of the rigging have rigging experts. But the rigging experts can only tell you how you must rig it up once they know the weight capacity. So we're, we're doing that. Um, there was another malfunction with the air conditioning unit. Uh, I think a couple of days ago, they had a mitigation crew come today, so that should be resolved. Uh, so those are the short-term things we should, from the expertise that we've received, they said that we should be able to keep Thal Yamar Hall open and operating, uh, for the short term, but there is a period of time that Thal Yamar Hall goes dark, uh, for about three months annually anyway. And so we're gonna use that period of time, maybe extend it slightly more to make some critical repairs. Uh, the good news is that we do have some money to go towards these repairs. Uh, I've asked, and I think Mr. Williams is working on this, that while we're doing the regular blocking and tackling the things that have to be done, we also want to get some evaluation of upgrades to Thal Yamar Hall so that we will be eligible for some performances that we may miss out on because we don't have the lighting systems that other, um, auditoriums have. Um, so, uh, those things are in the, uh, line side of, of not only Mr. Williams, uh, our city attorney's office, but our contractors and, and they're working on them all.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mike, how you doing?
Doing well, Councilman. How you doing?
I'm good. Uh, is, uh, Tharima Hall in compliance?
Uh, I do believe that it is in compliance, but it's some of that, uh, the rigging specs will be confirmed, uh, when we get a certified engineer's report. Uh, they are coming down in a couple of weeks to perform those load tests.
Is it a completely in ADA compliance?
Uh, at present, yes, it is. The elevator is functioning and we have a plan, uh, that we've been developing with our contractors to build a new external elevator in Loja as well.
Are the fire curtains in compliance?
Uh, that will be determined by the engineer's report in a couple of weeks. We suspect that there may be, uh, some deterioration with it, but absent a, uh, qualifying evidentiary document, uh, I cannot state that it is not in compliance.
Is there mold in Tharima Hall?
There is growth in Thal Yamar Hall, is what I was told by the, uh, remediation specialist this morning. There is not mold. They cannot certify it as mold and it is not, uh, per their preliminary findings, not anything toxic. They said that they were, they felt safe in there, but we want to take an extra measure and make sure that we get our, our, our staff uh, working remotely until we can get a, a certified report from them as well. This was a development that happened actually over the last, uh, weekend and rainy week. Um, part of the, uh, uh, HVAC controls failed and caused humidity in the building. And we all know how quickly, uh, we can start to see, uh, growth from those kinds of situations. But, uh, as of their, uh, findings this morning, uh, we're gonna get some dehumidifiers in there. They said it was actually much, uh, much better than they were expecting. And so we don't think it's going to be a huge problem, but even as such, we're still going to deploy the dehumidifiers and get a, uh, a hygienist in to make sure that we are certified to, uh, to continue operations as we have.
And we have certified reports stating that it was not mold?
Not yet. I, I literally just met with them an hour ago.
When will you have those in writing?
Uh, as soon as we can get the dehumidifiers in, the next step is to get the hygienist in. We have not, as I said, we just completed this an hour ago, so I can find out, uh, uh, I can find that information out for you as soon as possible and deliver it to you.
You could, so you completed this an hour ago. My, I guess my next question, how long have these problems existed? long had these problems existed?
We just found out about it on Monday.
You just found out about all these problems on Monday, there hadn't been existing problem?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, could, could you, I'm, I'm not sure which problems you, uh, I thought you were talking about.
Thal Yamar Hall period.
Oh, some of these problems, some of these problems go back 12, 15, maybe 20 years.
Okay. All right, and you're going to provide us these reports and everything in writing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, yes, ma'am, yes, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Have any shows been canceled?
Uh, there have been some shows that have been canceled, yes, sir, but it was mostly due to, uh, miscommunication about the air conditioning capacity. Uh, when the shows were canceled, the promotion partners were not aware that we had the chillers available, uh, to supplant or to supplement the current, you know, in-house HVAC system that is working below capacity. We use these chillers for IBC for about three weeks and the, the building was completely fine. It pushes the same, um, the same amount of poundage that the house system does.
You mentioned the elevator.
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned ADA, you said everything is fine?
Yes, the, the only ADA concern has been the, uh, elevator, which was not functioning, uh, some months back. Uh, we have since repaired it, but it is an old elevator, it is functioning now, but given its age, the original elevator, and so given its age, uh, that's the reason that we have put into the plan with the contractors to make a new.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, and thank you, Mr. Williams. I think my questions probably could deal with potential litigation, so I'm going to hold mine until we get into executive session. Any other questions on this item, colleagues? All right, um, the next is review and continuation of COVID-19 local emergency, Jackson City Council. Um, colleagues, any, any need to discuss that? All right, um, discussion, litigation, legal matters, Mr. Martin, what do we, I'm assuming we need to go into executive session?
We'll have two brief matters for executive session, neither one will take on.
Okay. Um, colleagues, I would take a motion to go in closed session for the purposes of discussing...
Oh. We have announcements, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Make it quick, Mr. Mayor.
I'll do that. Uh, and I don't know if anybody else has announcements, but, uh, the back-to-school celebration, this is important, we need our children to know this, um, and supply giveaway is Saturday, August 17th, uh, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and that will be at the Jackson Zoo. Uh, admission is free, uh, due to local business sponsorship. Uh, family fun day events, splash pad, carousel rides, games, face painting, bouncy house, animal encounters and with zookeepers and health screening, uh, will be available at this event. Uh, I want to encourage people to, uh, log in to the city's website, go to the Ask Antar tab. Um, the city's website is www.jacksonms.gov. You can backslash ask that dash Antar backslash again to submit your questions, uh, and look forward to responding to resident concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, let's see, we've lost our forum. Where's Mr. Foot? We've lost our forum. Huh? Let's recess for five minutes and come back.
Are we in executive session?
We haven't gotten there yet because we've lost our forum. Brian had to leave, but I just got Brian on the phone and Mr. Hartley and Mr. Stokes. All right, so, we, all right, hey, everybody, we got to get going, now stop it. We are back in session from recess, and so I will entertain a motion to go into executive closed session for the purposes of discussing litigation and potential litigation. Mr. Banks? All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, we are now in closed session. If you were not relevant to these conversations, please...
We didn't vote on.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Foot. All in favor? Okay, we are now in closed... Okay, all right, colleagues, we are now out of executive session, uh, in executive section, uh, session. We voted on item number 36 and it passed with a vote of, it failed, I'm sorry, um, thank you, I'm not looking at it. It failed with a vote of four to zero. Zero four, thank you. It failed with a vote of zero four. All right? And there was no other action taken. We were, we had discussion items. All right, with that, colleagues, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just wanted to ask that, uh, budget season does kick off, uh, just want to announce that budget, uh, hearings do, do kick off August 12th, and they go throughout, um, September 6th. I do have a, um, copy of the schedule here for council members and those that need it. Thank you.
All right, colleagues, thank y'all so much, and I appreciate all of you being here. Is there anything else? If not, yes.
The monthly report, item 52.
Oh, item 52. I should, see, okay, I should never close my book. All right, item 52, uh, colleagues, did all of you receive your monthly financial reports as required according to the section? Okay. All right, everybody? Okay, yes, the four of us who are here did, thank you. All right, colleagues, anything else, or clerk, are we missing anything else? All right, it, okay, if there is nothing else to come before us, this meeting is adjourned.